This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag, and to its sacred power, and to its ever-powerful legitimacy, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Clem Wazleski. Rich Patterson.
Here.
Mike Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Gubernalty.
Here.
Craig Pomisano.
Here.
Stephen Gesicki.
Here.
Remy Pelosi. Joe DiGirolamo.
Here.
Ron Gruppo.
Here.
Mike Richmond.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. For the record, Remy Grossman is here, or Pelosi. Notice that this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of the prior meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions, number 21, 2019, Alan and Linda Schubin. Number 22, 2019, Bendel LLC. And number 23, 2019, James Clerkin.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Swearing in?
Yeah. At this point, we're swearing in our newest member, Steve Gesicki.
Steve, I can swear in. I can swear in from there. Do you have this mic? Sure. Okay, so you'll just have to repeat after me. I state your name.
Steve Gesicki.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I would bear true allegiance and faith to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will impartially.
I do solemnly swear that I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties of the office of planning board member.
Perform all duties, planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thanks. And I'm going to give this to Joanna just before the end of the night, just on the other side of the room.
Your speaker's now.
Okay, thank you. Test.
First case is Charlene Polikoff, Two Bay Crest Drive, block 709.01, lot 21, in the S-50 district. They grant C relief for lot coverage, side yard setback, total side yard setback, and possibly others. Separately seeking variation from Chapter 175 flood damage prevention to construct in addition below base flood elevation. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Eric Goldstein, I'm the advocate of the applicant, Charlene Polikoff. Just by way of technical change to the application, the applicant is now not seeking the construction of any new habitable space below the flood elevation. So, Mr. Chairman, when you referenced the flood, Margate's flood prevention ordinance, that no longer is an issue before the board. The other variances still exist with regard to the dimensional aspects of the design. But before I get started with the actual application, I do want to reference some of the history as to how we got here. I think it's very important, and obviously to Charlene's great benefit, so many people are out tonight who I think, if this doesn't show why we're all here in Margate, then nothing else does. You know, we beat Sandy, we beat so many things that come up in our everyday life. Charlene, unfortunately, has something she is still beating. In her time of need, these people came out to support her, and it's just so terrific to see the community come together like this for a good cause. And we don't have that too often, you know, we always have our little gripes and beefs here and there. Here, we've got a pinpoint accuracy of everybody coming out to help one of their own, and I couldn't be prouder to be up here representing her, so thank you, Charlene, for that. With regard to the meat of the application, this has gone through a couple of different changes over the course of the past week and a half or so, most of which Mr. Barnhart's going to walk through, but the history of this is very important. So, as Mr. McLaren and Mr. Gallantino know, the original set of plans was for a fairly substantial portion of the construction into the flood plain. That raises a lot of issues with Margate's community rating system and the benefit that all of the residents get by new homes being built at or above the required base flood. The plans that Charlene thought were going to work better at first would have had existing grade of her first floor extended out towards the back of the house. It created a little bit of a problem with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, along with Margate's flood prevention ordinance. The city, as it always does, being very concerned about its citizens wanting to work with us through Commissioner Amadeo, who's here, convened a meeting. This was Tuesday afternoon. At that meeting, Mr. Barnhart and I, along with representative of the city, and Charlene and her daughter, came to figure out how we can make this plan work. We didn't want to jeopardize the flood rating for everybody in Margate, but she needs this house to be built in a way that she can get around, as she'll testify to later and as her family will testify to. It's, everybody in this room knows, she's been through a horrific tragedy and is going to need some substantial help for the remainder of her life. Her family, again, this is so nice, drops everything and says, "We're going to make this work. We're going to figure out a way to make this work. They're going to help the mother out, and they're going to have to move in, and it's going to be a daily grind." But, that's what we do. The city did the same thing. Mr. Gallantino, Mr. McLaren said, "We want to help. We don't want any construction beneath the flood plain. DEP doesn't want construction beneath the flood plain. FEMA doesn't want it beneath the flood plain. Let's come up with a solution." Mr. Barnhart took a look at the plan in discussion with the applicant, along with the city, modified it in a way that what's being proposed to be built into the flood plain is not habitable space at all. It's open aired, non-convertible space, which is basically, we're calling it a three seasons room, correct, John? No heat, no air conditioning, no sleeping quarters, no plumbing below the base flood. Everything else, the living area of the house, will be out of the flood plain. So, I don't know, Jimmy, we were there for three hours on Tuesday, figuring out round and around how we can do this, and said he had some good ideas. We took those. Over the course of the past two days, John and I pretty much tweaked the plan that was originally submitted to come up to what's before you tonight. What's before you tonight, if it weren't for Charlene's condition and everybody being here, and if this weren't initially submitted with construction below the flood plain, I think you would look at this and say, "It's a relatively simple variance application." And that's how we're treating it, because the construction of everything below the required base flood won't be livable. Be porch area, place to go if there's a nice day. It's not such a nice day, you'll have some cover, but no one can sleep down there, which was the original plan. So, having said that, we're going to go forward as if the variance application consists of the coverage, the setback, and we have determined based upon a modification, we also need a height variance. It's not a D variance, it's a C variance, so the application based upon any and all others, the advertisement, that one out, and the notices, that one out, are sufficient under the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. Testifying tonight, John Barnhart, he's a licensed professional engineer and a professional planner. He'll be giving the information about the structure itself, but we've got people, packed the room, many of whom may wish to speak in their support of Charlene. Maybe they're just here to watch, and hopefully this all goes well, but to the extent the board wants to hear one by one to come up, we can do that. I'll leave that to Mr. Manos, Mr. Patterson, how you want to manage the portion of the meeting for the public. Unless the board has any additional questions before we get started, that's basically the background. Thank all of you, thank Commissioner Amadeo for saying on day one, "Come over. We're going to drop everything." Mr. Deanie, Mr. Gallantino, Mr. McLaren, certainly very helpful in getting us to this point. Would you prefer to hear Mr. Barnhart first or to hear the family first, Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Barnhart.
Okay. John, would you come forward and get sworn in, and I'll have you qualified as an expert.
And, Mr. Barnhart, just your name and business address for the record.
John Barnhart, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And obviously, Mr. Chairman, he's been before the board a number of times, and he's qualified.
We accept his credentials.
As a planner and engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Manos. John, obviously, you're very familiar with the application.
Eric, could you speak into the microphone, please?
John, you're very familiar with the application that's been submitted. Why don't you walk us through the present iteration of the plan, as the prior iteration really doesn't matter, because we're not going with much of that, other than the fact that the footprint remains the same.
Sure. Okay. As Eric pointed out, our office got involved in the application, and what was being requested of what's in the package that you have before you are essentially three variances. Variance one was a side yard setback from a proposed building expansion that is in the gray shaded area here on the exhibit I have before you. Variance, it's actually a combined side yard setback. Variance two is a building coverage variance, and then, as Eric already went into great length, variance three was from the flood damage prevention ordinance, and that was to allow floor space to be below the requirement of base flood elevation plus three. We've gone back and forth, back and forth, there's been a lot of iterations, and the goal for Charlene's family, the goal here is that Charlene's daughter and family needs to move into this home. So, they were trying to create a solution that allows her access into the building by way of a ramp. The plan, as you have before you, was that this new expanded building footprint would be her bedroom suite. She would then be able, then it would break through to the existing house. She'd then be able to go into that living space, but have her own quarters separate from her daughter's family. That was what they set out to do. Obviously, being in a wheelchair, the ramp lets her get into her space, but then the issue with flood elevation comes into play. We have different elevations of floors. Do you institute an elevator, do you not? Do you have a four, five, six-top elevator? If it's really not reasonable, when you're actually trying to utilize your home. We got into a position where it was, okay, this doesn't work. We can't make it work with regard to base flood elevation to suit the family needs, but we also can't make it work to meet the requirements of the flood damage prevention ordinance. So, we started talking and going through a number of ideas and options to try to create the additional space that the family needs within this building, but still meet the flood damage prevention ordinance, because we recognize how important it is to the community, and really to the state of New Jersey, in fact. So, what the end result is, is what we are proposing is to keep the footprint of development that's in your package exactly the way that it's shown. So, there is a building expansion, as I mentioned. It will have a side yard setback of 11.8 feet, right here along the side where the proposed handicap ramp will be, and there is a building coverage variance of 32.15% where 30% is permitted in the zone. Those two variances with our application, as we're submitted, there is no change proposed to that. But what we are proposing to modify this evening is to eliminate that flood damage prevention issue. So, what the proposal is, is to take that ground floor space, well, I should say ground floor, the floor space that was shown on those plans that would be even with the existing finished floor of the home, that's going to become an open space, a screened-in porch, so to speak, a three seasons type of room. That will be supported on structure. The first finished floor of that new space would be at the second floor, would tie into the second floor. So, Charlene will be able to come, they'll be able to come in the proposed parking area along Harbor Lane, go up the ramp, and traverse across that three seasons space, enter an elevator, and then go up to the second level. If you look at your architectural plans that were provided with the application, if you go to that first floor plan, essentially, look at that, and that just turns into an open room. That first floor layout with the master suite would just get pushed up to the second floor, so that becomes Charlene's space at that second floor. The final aspect of it is, they needed to get two bedrooms into this program to make it work for the families. That plan that you have before you had the first bedroom down at the lower level for Charlene, and it had another bedroom above it. With this plan, we lose a bedroom, so we started trying to be creative in how we can come up with another bedroom. Sitting with Sarah and Charlene the other day, as Eric pointed out, for probably, what, three-plus hours, we recognized that the existing house has a walk-up attic. It has a nice, it's a nice headroom in that existing attic, but if we bump the roof up and have an architect create some dormers and bump the roof up and make it look interesting from the outside, it will also give them the opportunity to pick up that extra bedroom that they need to support the family all on this site.
John, is that in the new part or in the old part?
That would be in the old part.
Okay.
Yeah, if you actually, if you look at the existing floor plans in the package, you'll see the walk-up attic stairs, they are shown. But that, as Eric pointed out, that does create a little deviation with regard to height. So, let's talk about the variances for a second, because although there's been a lot of discussion and there's a lot of interest in this application, at the end of the day, with where we are, I think that the requests that we actually have before you tonight are pretty minor and pretty de minimis from a land use perspective. So, I'll go to the setback first, and then we'll talk about building coverage, and then we'll finish it up with the height. The setback variance is an interesting one, because we actually comply with regard to setback from our proposed expansion. We're 11.86 feet, where I believe 10 feet is the minimum required in the zone, but we don't comply with regard to the combined side yard. We happen to be a corner lot, so we have no rear yard, so we're bound by the proposed side yard here and the existing side yard, which is an existing non-conformity on Bay Crest Avenue. So, when you add those two side yards together, we're short of the 22-foot requirement. That's the only reason that we need a side yard setback variance. If you were to ignore the existing non-conformity, this is a more than compliant side yard setback from our proposed area of expansion. So, for those reasons, we believe that is a de minimis request, and that variance can be granted. The second variance is with regard to building coverage. While it's not a true hardship and descent of land use, we have a situation here where we have an existing building, and we have to try to create a solution that works for their family, so the only real solution, in our opinion, is to create new floor space. Trying to create floor space that works for Charlene within the existing structure is extremely difficult. So, creating new building space that can easily be constructed in an ADA-compliant fashion with an elevator, and doors that are wide enough, and an appropriate bathroom, and all those elements, it created the need for adding floor space to the property. That creates building coverage. Therefore, we're over by approximately 2.2%. Again, very de minimis with regard to total building square footage, our building area, I think Roger's report points out, it's only about 120 square feet or something.
Correct.
So, again, both of those deviations, we think are very, very minor. I think that they can be argued from both a C1 or a C2 type of hardship. I think that, you know, this is a case where this is going to be further beautifying the site with additional building upgrade of the site, so we believe that the benefits of the deviation, obviously from a personal level, but also from a land use level, substantially outweigh any potential detriments. With regard to the height request, so, as I mentioned, we looked at it.
John, before you, could you, the one variance that you also need is the curb cut, and I think you ought to discuss that.
Oh, yeah, you know, I didn't mention, I'm just going to get into the parking and the curb cuts at the end.
Okay.
Yep, I got it.
Fair enough.
Thank you, though. The height variance, what we looked at is the, we looked at the existing structure from a structural standpoint, and in order to gain that, they're proposing a bedroom and then a kids' playroom for Sarah's children in that space. They need a little bit of additional head height in order to make it work. So, what we're asking for is to go 2.5 feet above what would be permitted in the zone. But I need to put that into context, because when you have a building that's an existing building, this floor elevation is 8.64. Our office reshot the elevation and confirmed it's at 8.64 in 1988. We're required to measure our height from that 8.64 because we're going up from an existing finished floor. So, we're allowed to go 28 feet above that, and that would allow, that we'd be compliant. The existing building is a little bit shy of the 28 feet, 24 and 1/2 feet. We're asking to add 2 and 1/2 feet to that to allow us to go to 30.5 feet above the existing finished floor. But why I said you have to put it in context is that if this was a new structure, we're allowed to start measuring from elevation 12, we're allowed to go 28 feet above 12, which would actually put us at elevation 40. Our proposal has only taken us to approximately elevation 39. So, while we technically need a height variance, we're lower with our proposal than a permitted building would be if we demolished everything on the site and built a brand-new building.
Quick question.
Yes.
The floor height, or the ceiling heights in the first and second floor, are they eight feet?
Yeah, they're just average eight feet, yes.
So, technically, the height variance, you're allowed to go 30 feet with the one exception of 20 feet from the first floor to top of the third plate. So, I...
Let's just get you sworn in. Mr. McLaren, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Well, I understand this isn't really testimony, but let's just get it done and out of the way. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think that height variance is only 0.5 feet, is my argument.
Okay.
So, it lessens that degree, even though I feel it's a worthy variance.
Roger, are you talking to the ridge or to the east?
To the ridge.
To the ridge. Because everything that you're now is measured to the east, right?
No.
20 feet above the floor is the top plate.
I'm certain that they comply with the 20 feet from first floor to the top of plate of that second floor. There's no doubt that they don't.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So, there's an exemption in our ordinance that gives them the 30 feet if they meet that criteria, so that height variance goes from 2.5 to 2.5.
Six inches.
Six inches.
Right, but by raised, well, okay. Okay.
It doesn't say new construction, old construction.
Okay, all right.
I think you, just wanted to point that out.
So, it's still deviation, but it's less of a deviation.
Still deviation, but it's not, no.
So, again, what we're proposing, what we are requesting and proposing this evening is to go 30.5 feet above the existing finished floor, just so it's clear for the record. So, as I started, there's been a lot of back-and-forth conversation and concern with regard to this application. The way the family set out was to try to create a solution for Charlene that didn't have an elevator and a lot of hurdles with regard to trying to get through the home. This building will have an elevator in it in order to allow Charlene to get to her bedroom suite area on that second floor, but I think that the layout, they, I don't want to use the words "are comfortable" with it, but they believe that they can make it work with the deviations that we are asking for, and we believe that they've gone to great strides to get to a point that hopefully the city is much more comfortable with from a land use and obviously flood damage prevention perspective. So, that's the extent of my testimony, obviously, we can answer any questions, and then, oh, yeah, I almost forgot the curb cut. With regard to curb cuts and parking, the house will be a six-bedroom house at that point, which would require four parking spaces. So, the, we have to, we are requesting to widen the curb cut on Bay Crest Avenue a little bit, and we are proposing a new two-car parking driveway with a curb cut on Harbor Lane. The ordinance, as you know, permits two 10-footers or one 20-footer. We are proposing two 20-footers at the end of it. They are on different streets, it's not as though we're putting them both on the same street and obliterating our entire curb frontage, and they, you know, obviously, they are, and they're both as far from the corner as they can be from a safety perspective, so we think it's an appropriate request. It still allows, allows a real nice landscaped area up on the corner of Bay Crest and Harbor Avenue, so again, we believe that that also has no negative impact.
And that's to provide direct access for Mrs. Polikoff to get to her ramp.
That is correct. Ms. Polikoff, they'd be able to pull right in here, there's a little concrete pad that takes them up the ramp to the back, allows them to go in the building, and then, at that point, she would either be able to go into the main living area, or if she was going into her master area, she would get in an elevator and go up to the master area.
John, you testified to this a little earlier, but I'm going to ask you a specific question. In your professional opinion, as a licensed professional planner and a professional engineer, do you see any negatives associated with this application?
I do not. I think from both sides, I think, you know, from both a public standpoint and a municipal standpoint, I think everybody has worked to create a solution that maybe not everybody's 100% happy with, but I think is workable for everybody involved.
And to the extent there could possibly be any negative associated with this, would the benefits greatly outweigh any such negatives?
I think the benefits of this deviation substantially outweigh any potential detriments, and I believe that there is no substantial impact to the zone plan or zoning ordinance, the variances are rather de minimis, and there is no substantial negative impact to the public good.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Barnhart's obviously sworn in, he's going to continue to be here, but I think it would be helpful right now, if we heard from the family, as to how this will benefit them to the extent that the board is willing to grant these variances.
I have a question for John.
Yes.
Looking at the as-built, existing, where would the elevator be in relationship?
Could you talk into the mic?
I thought I was.
So, I mean, the front, I guess I thought you'd like that.
My question was, looking at the existing first floor plan, where the elevator would be on the first floor?
So, the thought is that the elevator, and an architect will have to submit a final revised plan if we're fortunate enough to receive an approval. The thought is, from a structural standpoint, it's going to be much easier to put the elevator structure, shaft, and everything in the proposed footprint expansion, so it'll sit somewhere along this wall so that it can go up, so it can go up and access the space above.
So, it'll be in the three-season room?
Correct, yes.
And if Ms. Polikoff wants to go into the elevator, she has to go outside? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Well, they'll be allowed to have like a foyer area, just like you can have a low foyer area, you know, on the ground floor when you go upstairs.
Okay, so you would go out and around.
Yeah, she'll still be in, she'll be inside going into the elevator.
Thank you.
You going to swear, everybody in together?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, why don't we do that? If you think you're going to speak from the applicant's perspective, just we'll swear everyone in.
Fine.
I'm not talking about the public, I'm talking about the family. Just go down the line, just state your name and address for the record, and I'll be all at once.
Charlene Polikoff, Two Bay Crest Drive, Margate.
Sarah Rosenthal, 615 North Douglas Avenue, Two Bay Crest Drive.
Jacob Polikoff, 6 Queen Street, Philadelphia.
And do each swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth? Yes, yes, everyone said yes.
Okay. All right, I think Sarah's going to speak first.
Thank you so much to everybody for being here, and please bear with me, because she'll tell you I'm a crybaby. On March 14th of this year, a doctor said to me and my brother, "If she makes it," and that's a very big "if," so I am very, very grateful to be here tonight, and while we are here, this is obviously not what we wanted. We have lived a very quiet and happy life, thanks to my mom and my brother and sister-in-law and the most wonderful husband in the world. We love Margate. We love Margate so much that I had spent seven years of being married to my husband trying to convince him to move here, which he did, I mean, it didn't take much, but because we want our children to go to school here and only here. We never want to leave, my mom never wants to leave. She loves where she lives, she hasn't moved, ever. I love it so much, I have the coordinates tattooed on my leg. So, that's what this house means to us and our family. Living with my mom is a necessity. It is also my great honor, but I do take care of her from when we wake up in the morning until when we go to bed at night. That is going to continue for a very long time. I don't know how long. She's always going to have needs, and I am always going to be here for her, as well as the rest of us. Because of those needs, and because my husband and I have two young children and jobs, we also require help from my brother and his wife and their family. So, what we're asking for tonight is not because we're asking for any special favors or because we want to ask for any special favors, we're asking for it out of absolute necessity. I told my mom, the only special favor I can ever remember her asking of the city in my lifetime is that I be put in Mrs. Francis's class in fourth grade, which I was. So we appreciate your time and for working with us, and we hope that we can achieve this plan, which, while not what we originally set out to do, you know, will have to work. And so thank you, and thank you, everybody, again, for being here.
Hi. So I noticed, excuse me, I'm a crybaby too, maybe not as much as my sister. I noticed on the agenda that there were two applications, so I just wanted to get a show of hands to see who in this room is here in support of our mom. Thank you. And I think that's a testament to who she is and the respect she's earned by how she's lived her life. She's loyal, she's giving, she's loving, she loves this community, which is why she wants to be able to stay here and stay here safely and comfortably. So we really do appreciate everyone's support and the board for listening. Since the time Sarah and I were born, our mom has dedicated her entire life to us and our happiness and well-being. She never had a different focus. She never put herself first. Some people have said she has great kids, or have commented on how her kids have supported her, but how could we be and act any different? We're her kids. She raised us. When she deserves only the very best, and that doesn't end with us, it extends to everyone in this room. What she has been through and continues to go through is unimaginable, yet somehow it's only made her stronger. I want to acknowledge my sister Sarah. I know Eric has had, has said a lot about how much she's done. She's a retired lawyer. She's a Realtor, as many of you are, and now she's also a hospital-caliber nurse. Since our mom returned home four weeks ago, in addition to working and raising her kids with Dan, she's done everything necessary to allow our mom to live and to continue to heal, and there's a lot more than that, to that than most people know, which, that brings me to my wife Jackie and to Sarah's husband, Dan. In March, when our mom got sick, Sarah and I abruptly left Dan and Jackie, each with a three-year-old and an infant, and we pretty much didn't come back for eleven weeks. They somehow held everything together, as they both always do with everything. There are rocks, and we could not have been any luckier in finding the most supportive and loving partners in life. Two more. I want to thank Eric, who I only had the pleasure of meeting tonight. He's ably guided us through this complicated and very frustrating process, and I want to thank the planning board for their time and dedication to this matter, which required them to sift through a large amount of information and misinformation. So thank you.
Give me an intro.
Charlene will speak now.
I can't turn my own camera here. I'll try. Thank you. I can't thank everyone enough for being here. Thank the city, the city that has my heart since nineteen sixty. Since I got sick, I've been overwhelmed with the support of- I've been overwhelmed with the support of close friends, all friends, people I didn't even know. I mean, it's just incredible. My kids took a lot of my speech, so I'm not going to repeat it, but I'll just give a little info about me. Louis and I moved to Margate in nineteen sixty from Atlantic City. I moved to Claremont Avenue, where it's the best street in the world then. There were a hundred kids on the four-hundred block. I met and have retained two lifelong friends, one of which is sitting next to Louis. I volunteered at the ballpark, serving hot dogs my father donated. I volunteered in the school library, which I'm not sure Jerry Smallwood was happy about or not happy about. I did whatever I could, you know, for, I don't think they call it the PTA anymore. And it was my pleasure because it was my school. My kids were now going there, and it made me ecstatic. And now, hopefully, I'll have grandchildren going there as well. What happened to me is beyond reason, but you know what happens. I'm not going to say the word. I found when I was in the hospital, when I first became, I mean, I was on so many, there was like fifty-seven IVs in me at once, at one point. When I became cognizant enough to speak to my kids and find out exactly what happened to me, I was alive, and I knew, I knew that chances of not being alive are way greater than, than living through this sickness. So I wasn't aggravated, and I wasn't sad because I was alive, and hey. When my hair started falling out, I wasn't aggravated because I was alive. And I could go on and on with being woken up at four o'clock in the morning for a blood test, you know, and horrible things that, commercials on TV that I used to cover my ears, nothing bothered me, and nothing made me sad until this. I really, I really needed a way to live independently, where I could have an inside-out entrance and an outside entrance on the first floor. I mean, it was a very discreet plan. I understand that the flood plan wouldn't allow it. I understand that now, but I'm very, very, very sad, and I don't, I don't think I'll get over it because my life, I looked forward to one day having that independence again, even though my nurse is wonderful, and her children are the light of my life, as are my other two grandchildren. But, you know, I need my own space where I don't have to go by anyone's bedroom, and, but we all make compromises in life, and I understand that fully. And I don't even know what I wrote down. What, no, I'm not going to say it. I'm just going to thank everyone on the board and in the city, and especially thank everyone here. You know, I love you guys, and I met you at all different times, and I'm really, really fortunate. Thank you.
It's a tough statement to follow, but I think what the family said kind of sums up better than anything I can say. The variances are justified. You've got professional planning testimony, you've got engineering testimony. To the extent the board has questions, we'll certainly answer them, but at this point, the applicant has made some significant modifications, as Charlene said. It's the best plan that works for everyone, maybe not the best plan that she had in her mind when this whole process started, but we believe, as presented tonight by Mr. Barnhart and by the family, that we've satisfied the requirements of the municipal land use law, Margate's zone code and ordinances, and we've requested this be granted. We understand there are a number of members of the public here.
Well, Roger needs, we need Roger to read his report into the record, too. So we'll usually do that first, but at this point, we wanted you to go first.
Sure.
So we'll have Roger read his report. If there's any questions from the board, if not, we'll open it to any public comment.
Sir.
Roger, you've already been sworn in.
Thank you, board members, members of the public. Report is based on the application of Charlene Polikoff to Baycrest Drive, block seven-zero-nine-point-zero-one, lot twenty-one, which is in the S-50 zone. I'm going to abridge my report, as John has addressed most of the concerns, but the background is, as you heard from the applicant and the applicant's professionals, is to increase living space as a necessity to help Mrs. Polikoff achieve her independence, which I think any of us would agree, that's an important factor in all our lives. The variances are, as discussed before, combined side yard setback, whereas twenty-two feet is required, seventeen more feet is proposed. Building coverage, thirty percent is required, maximum thirty-two-point-one-five percent is requested. Building height, with the height exception, they are asking for a point-five-foot height variance, and actually, as John discussed, and I agree with that, if this was a new construction, they would be measured from elevation twelve, so they would be within the height requirements. A curb cut, whereas one-ten or two-tens or one-twenty are provided, and they're asking for two, a second twenty-foot curb cut. The documents reviewed are in the report, section two on page three. The variances required, we just discussed. They requested zero waivers. The comments, I think the C-one and C-two criteria need to be satisfied, and I believe as a planner, as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey, that the testimony provided provides the board with a, enough information to make a good judgment on its application. There is a hardship portion of this, of this application, and that's in fact that it is a corner lot. There is no rear yard, there are two side yards, so they're hamstrung by that twenty-two foot, and it's a large lot. Again, because it's a large lot, their building coverage is actually, percentage is less than a smaller lot, and the amount of overage is one-hundred-twenty-point-four square feet, ten by twelve. You can put a shed on that. You just have to comply with the landscape requirements. I think you would agree to do that. Other than that, I don't see any further outstanding issues that need to be addressed. I do want to address the, from a personal note, meeting with Mrs. Polikoff and her family and her daughter Sarah. I give Sarah a lot of respect and a lot of kudos for standing up for her mother and her family. That's very important to me as a person. That's it.
Any questions from the board? Anybody from the public wish to speak?
You think?
Well, if you, okay, if you wish to speak, please come up and state your name, an address, and be sworn in, and then you can state your comments.
And we'll do, we'll do one at a time, but you can line up if you want, but just state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Robbins, and I live at nine Harbor Lane.
Ms. Robbins, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My, the letter that I received in the mail is nothing like what went on here tonight, and that's why I'm here. It talked about below flood plan, and that, of course, would not be okay with me. I am directly behind the Polikoff home, and of course, my sympathies are, you know, overwhelming for her. I, I just want to protect my own property. I want to make sure that my property is not in any kind of danger of, and like I said, the original letter stated that it probably would be because things were below the level they should be. I had also gone, gone to the zoning board and looked at the drawings. Apparently, these drawings are not the same as the ones I saw. These were just presented this evening, and were not, was, we were not aware of any of this, any of it. We received a letter on the fourteenth, that the hearing was on the twenty-seventh, and here we are.
May I? My name is Mark Robbins. I'm Sheila Robbins' son.
And Mr. Robbins, do you swear affirm, your same address?
Uh, no. One Hundred Carre Court, Northfield, New Jersey.
And do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I would only want to add that from the sounds of the plans now, the structure is going up. I'm not an engineer. I don't necessarily see a problem with that. I'm still unsure about the grade-level construction, what I think was referred to as a three-season room. So what I would want to understand a little bit better is what material that's going to be made out of. It sounded, I think I heard that that was going to house the elevator shaft. I may be wrong, but I think as my mother said, at the end of the day, if flooding possibilities are mitigated, there's no issue. So I'm just not sure if I'm trained enough to understand this.
Right.
Nothing, what, what we've done, there is no variance required for flood plane elevation. The plans have been modified, so there is no variance. They will be at proper flood elevation.
And this plan is not going to affect my home in any way whatsoever? Is that true?
I don't know what you mean. I, I don't know if it's going to look different when you look out your window. I don't, what do you mean?
Can I jump in on this? The flood damage prevention ordinance is to construct their house below an imaginary level. It's up here, it's off the ground. They're proposing to do it here. If that was granted or not, it would not affect you from a flooding standpoint.
Okay.
Their construction that they're proposing tonight is not going to affect you from a flooding standpoint.
Okay.
There's no runoff that's going to be generated that's going to affect your house. I haven't seen the details of this, but trust me, when they come in for my review, we'll make sure that the runoff stays on their site, does not go on your site. The, the height variance, if they were to build a new house, they could go up three more feet. So the height is, to me, that's-
As I said, I don't, I don't see that posing an issue. My, my concern was ground coverage, solid ground coverage that will prevent water from-
There, there are actually lot coverage, there's still, they still link the lot coverage requirements.
Okay.
So I, I don't see that being any issue.
Okay.
Trust me, I would look out for you, too, for drainage and runoff. I don't see any, any harmful-
Like I'm saying, the only reason we were here is because of that letter that was sent to us, which sounded very detrimental. And if that's not the case, then I'm very happy, you know-
The flood damage prevention ordinance is very confusing, I admit that.
Yes, absolutely.
But I think we've resolved all that, and that was never going to be an issue with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to counter, if you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen. The letter does not say anything about danger. The letter simply references the municipal land use law and the variances we were seeking. They didn't read the letter correctly, they could have called me, which they didn't, come here tonight. I don't think that's correct. However, there's nothing in my notice that says you are in danger, the flood waters are coming, seek higher ground. It says, "We're seeking variances from setback, combined yard setback, and from Margate's flood development ordinance." So respectfully, maybe let's not blow things out of proportion, and their house is for sale. They're not even going to be living here that much longer, so again, let's not get crazy.
And I didn't bring it up, but, you know-
Don't touch it.
That was obnoxious, what he just did, with grandstanding in front of this audience. The point of the house for sale-
Quiet.
-is an issue.
You.
And it is preventing offers from coming in, according to her Realtor. So, so we didn't mention it, you did, but now that you did, that was, that's just unnecessary.
So someone's going to say, "I'm not going to buy it."
All right, that's enough, both of you, sit down.
Next.
That's enough, Eric.
Next.
Sit down.
Next.
I'm sorry?
Sit down.
Next.
Please, thank you.
I didn't understand, because that's not my name.
I understand. Is there anyone else that would like to say something? Public portion is closed. Leo, would you like to read the motion, please?
Sure. Someone needs to make a motion, and then we need a second. The motion is for C-variance relief for the following, a combined yard setback of seventeen-point-four feet-
Please keep it down till we're done.
Where twenty-two feet is required, a building coverage variance of thirty-two-point-fifteen percent, where thirty percent is the permitted maximum. The curb cuts, we permit one at twenty feet, they want two at twenty feet, so a forty-foot curb cut, or two twenty-foot curb cuts. And the height variance is going to be, I'll phrase it this way, they're going to be thirty-point-five feet above the existing finished first floor. Mr. McLaren calculates that as a half of a foot variance. Mr. Barnhart looked at that possibly as a two-and-a-half-foot variance. Whatever way we look at it, it's thirty-and-a-half feet above the finished first floor.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Tom Collins?
Unfortunately, in this case here, you just happen to be on a corner lot, which is very tough for me, but you can thank your Realtor that your corner lot is so unique that you're not on a through street. You're not on Bettner Avenue, Atlantic Avenue. You don't have major traffic crossing either side. So the curb cut is really de minimis. The building and the side yard setbacks are also de minimis. You're actually going to actually improve your house as you go along, so I'm sure you're going to aesthetically make it even nicer than it already is, and I think it's going to be good for the neighborhood, and I think it's going to be good for you, so I vote in favor. so I vote in favor.
Well, I can certainly relate to this situation. I had a similar one with my father many years ago. I really admire what the family is doing and willing to do. And I compliment the professional team for developing the solution that they did. Nothing that they're asking variance for is unreasonable. And I think we would be a pretty cold group if we didn't recognize this is a true hardship. I certainly vote in favor of it.
Rich Patterson?
I also vote in favor for the application. I, I would like to commend the family for working with the city and the people from the city that work with the family to come up with a compromise that everyone could live with. It might not be the best for everybody, but it's something that everybody could live with. It would have put this board in a terrible position, where we're, some things we just can't do. So again, Sarah and Jake, I mean, I've known them since they were eating ice cream and drooling down their chin, so. I don't see any negative impact on the neighborhood. I, I don't see, the side yard setback is more than what would be needed normally. The driveways are not on a busy street, and the roof height is six inches. So I think all these are de minimis, and approve the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
This crowd show up just makes me being proud of Morgate. Just, I got to commend all of you. I'm a soft touch too, so. I don't see anything that's a problem or negative with what you're doing. It's all minor. I'm going to cut it short and say yes, I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
As to the height variances, combined yard setback, and 2.2% exceeding coverage, I see no negative, substantially outweigh the detriment to the variance requested. I approve this application.
Margaret Cooper Naughton?
So, I've been a member of this board for 10 years. And so I've heard many, many cases, and each are unique, as this is probably more unique than most. I've never seen an outpouring of love and community as I see here tonight. And I'm proud also to be a resident of the city of Morgate, and probably forever as well. Except I don't have my, the tattoos on my leg with the corners. I'm hoping to move someday. I know this board really cares about the community and cares about the residents here, because we hear kind of little things here and there. I think that we've come up with a really good solution. I thank you for the compromise that the Polikoff family made in terms of the flood elevation and making it compliant. The variances are de minimis, the combined yard, side yard setback, the building coverage, the curb cuts, because they're on separate streets, I don't think is a negative impact. I, I approve of the application, and I wish you well.
Craig Palmisana?
They said it all. They said everything I was going to say, Charlie. I'm glad the community came together for you and all of Morgate. And we've all been here a long time, and I approve this message also. Not this message, I approve the application.
The application passes seven to nothing.
We have another case, you've got to get out of here.
Should we pause? Shall we pause till they're dismissed?
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break while the crowd leaves. All right, we're back in session. Next case is Larry and Clara Schreiber, 10 North Sumner Avenue, block 220, Lot 12, in the S40 district, to grant C variances relief for building coverage, front yards setback to porch, side yard setback, combined side yard setback, front yard landscaping, overall landscaping, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Uh, boy. Let me get my bearings here. Thank you, board members. Board Chairman, the port was originally dated May 30th, revised June 27th. I think I sent this to you, just a minor revision. Based on the application to Larry and Clara Schreiber at 10 North Sumner Avenue, block 220, Lot 12, in the S40 zone. It's not a subdivision, just a house lift with C variances. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Morgate in order to elevate and enlarge an existing non-flood compliant single-family dwelling and increase the bedroom count from four to seven, which increases the off-site parking demand. Several existing non-conformities are being exacerbated, and therefore require additional variances. The zoning schedule is on Page 2. Page 3 are the variances, and the documents reviewed, the variances are as follows. Front yard setback to the porch, whereas the prevailing front yard setback to porches is 10.2 feet. 8.1 feet exists, 8.3 feet is proposed. It's an expansion of a non-conforming setback. Front yard setback for the second floor deck, whereas the prevailing front yard setback to porches and decks is 10.2 feet, and 8.3 feet is proposed for the new deck. Variance number three, minimum side yard setback to the right, whereas the minimum side yard setback is eight feet. 3.6 feet exists, 3.6 feet is proposed. Expansion of a non-conforming setback. Number four, minimum combined yard, side yard setback for the building. 19.61 feet is required, 18.1 feet exist, and that's being reduced to 15.5 feet. Five, minimum combined side yard setback, building and deck, first and second floor, whereas the minimum combined side yard setback is 19.61 feet. 18.1 feet exists, and 9.9 feet is proposed. Building coverage, whereas the maximum building coverage is 33.8%. 35.5% exists, 34.4% is reduced, is proposed. It is a reduction, but it still requires a variance because it's over the maximum permitted. Total landscape coverage, whereas the minimum required landscape coverage is 35%. 33.7% exists, and 28.9% is proposed. Same thing for front yard landscaping. 60% is required, 47.5% exists, and 46% is proposed. Driveway curb cut, whereas the maximum curb cut width is 20 feet. 10 feet exists, and 23.5 feet is proposed. Third floor decks, whereas the third floor deck are not permitted at this location, and one is proposed. And the final variances, third habitable floor. It's portrayed on the plans as being a half-story, but the, and the testimony will provide how much of that area or ceiling height is over five feet. By those two large dormers facing the neighbor's house, I calculated that this is a third, full third floor, and they were not permitted in this zone. Waivers requested, a variance checklist, item 1A, copied an area map showing all lot lines within 200 feet of the property. I would recommend that the board grant that variance, or that waiver. Street trees are required, as well as a grass governor strip, the species preferred is sycamore maple. It'd be consistent in that area. To me, the plans are a little bit unclear, as there's no demo plan. What's existing, what's proposed? I think the applicant will provide testimony to that. The front yard to the porch is consisting, non-conforming, being expanded, therefore requiring a variance. Same thing through item number 10 and 11. Third floor decks are not permitted at this location, and one is proposed. The pool equipment is not shown at a location, we have to make sure that complies. Please provide testimony why our landscape coverage cannot be met. The zoning chart indicates seven bedrooms are being proposed, yet the floor plans indicate five. Please clarify that a portion of the rear of the house is being reduced. I think that's the handout that just came out that helps clarify that, that's helpful. Testimony should still be provided on that. A landscape plan or shrub location should be provided, that can be a condition of approval. Item number 23, what is, I asked back in May, what is the floor area of the third floor? And check the plans again. In my opinion, there's two rooms that are closed off that could easily have doors put in. And I met with Mr. Schreiber, he said that's not going to happen, but the bottom line is, it's now a full-size third floor, and it's not permitted. One of my recommendations, there are no windows or architectural relief along the ground floor walls on either side. I think the board might want to see a little bit more aesthetic appeal in that regard. And you can see the recommendations. Again, that concludes my report at this time, but we'll leave it to the testimony to provide accuracy. Also, I did add the definition on Page 7 of the half-story. So if there's any questions in regard to that, I think it's pretty clear. Board Chairman, that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicants. With regard to one of the variances Mr. McLaren referenced, the third floor deck, that is being and has been withdrawn, so that's not something we're seeking this evening. With regard to the remainder of the variances, Robert Lolio, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, is with me tonight to walk us through the plans. And Mr. and Mrs. Schreiber are also here to testify as needed, so I suppose. Mr. Mattis, we should have everybody sworn in at the same time.
Sure. Why don't you each just come up and state your name and address for the record, and I'll swear everyone in at once, and just go right down the line.
Larry Schreiber?
Hi, I'm Clara Schreiber.
Robert Lolio?
And Mr. Lolio, just state your business address for the record, we know the Schreiber's address.
219 Bellevue Avenue, Hamilton.
Okay, and each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, before Mr. Lolio testifies, he's been before this board on a number of occasions as a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey. Just ask that you accept his qualifications as an expert in the field of architecture.
We do.
Okay. If you would please walk us through the plan you've prepared. Initially, this was a, you would call it a demolition down to the foundation. Now it's going to be a house raise in place. And explain, as Mr. McLaren pointed out, the necessity for certain variances. Obviously, the third floor and the bedroom count, items we want to hit very hard because there's some question as to what actually is happening with those parts of the plan. So please, if you would, begin to testify regarding all the variances that are necessary.
So the overall concept is to maintain the existing foundation and elevate the first floor, and keep the first floor perimeter shell walls intact. The interior is going to be gutted and renovated. And then we're adding the second and third floor to the existing dwelling. There is currently a second floor, but it was built within a kind of an attic space, and it's not very salvageable at this point. So the, the main shape footprint of the house is staying the same, except in the back, where, as you can see in the diagram that we just handed out on A1, the hatch, the hatch section towards the rear is building right now, and we're demolishing that, so the front, the rear yard setback's increasing. The front porch is expanding a little bit on both sides, but the front, the front is maintaining the, I think, what I believe is 8.1 feet. And then we're adding a little section on the left-hand side of the property, which is also hatched next to the staircase. That's a little addition off the side of the house.
Now, just before we continue, the board is obviously, with Mr. Gallantino, very cognizant of the fact that numerous times people attempt to raise a house, or they discuss raising a house, and ultimately, the raise turns into a whole new construction because the wall couldn't support, the foundation couldn't support. That's not the intent here, the intent here is for a true raise, correct?
The intent is a true raise and additions to the first, above the first floor.
So you're going to just rip out, you're going to raise it up, put on blocks, and then you're going to take out the old foundation, put new foundation in?
No, we're extending the existing foundation.
Okay. So you feel that substantiate enough to support the structure?
Well, we will probably have to add a couple helical anchors.
That's good.
retrofit.
So in lieu of piling, they'll just use helicals? In lieu of piling, he'll use helical piles, the ones that twist down?
Thank you, Bob. But the intent?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. They clip to the side of the existing footing.
Okay, I need to be able to hear what's being said.
You're not using a microphone.
Of the existing footings wouldn't be proper for pile supporting.
Helicals or piles? Helicals or piling? In lieu of piling, they use.
Piling, piling. They got a grade beam, that needs top and bottom reinforcing. Regular footings wouldn't have that.
But they use, they use iron, steel, steel I-beams. They're coming off the helicals to support the existing footing.
If that's what's proposed.
We do have a letter from an engineer describing what sort of type there is, and that an actual spread footing would be sufficient on that slate. I'm planning on.
Is this a planning or zoning issue?
I'm not saying it wouldn't be efficient, it's just that the code requires piling.
Is that a building issue, or is that something? Well, that's not something before the board, so just continue.
I haven't fully analyzed the layout of the structure.
Okay.
I think the point we're trying to make is, this isn't what we would otherwise call a fake raise. You start the raise, oh, all the walls fell down. Now we have to start from scratch in the same footprint. This is an actual raise with helicals, with new concrete block underneath the house.
So you're maintaining the first floor and adding to it?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bob, I cut you off.
I guess the, the bedroom count is, that was a typo on the schedule, where, where did I? We have five bedrooms. I believe it's. We have two hidden in there. Four, four on the second floor, and then one on the third floor.
And two on the first floor?
No, there's zero on the first floor.
Well, where's the seventh bedroom? Oh, I see them on the third floor there, on the red side.
There's only five bedrooms proposed.
Five bedrooms?
Five bedrooms proposed. When I first started, we thought seven, but we cut back.
Got it.
So for the record, five bedrooms, not seven or four, correct?
Are we expected to believe that that loft is not going to be a bedroom?
We're not there yet, Glenn.
The loft is just like a hangout space for the kids, it's not.
Explain how you're going to vault the ceilings underneath so that that space couldn't be used in the future.
For the third floor?
Correct.
So as you can see, this, Roger was questioning these two side gables. And what, what we're planning to do is just put a vaulted ceiling in the bedrooms below to alleviate that third floor, and the potential includes an habitable space.
So there'll be nothing beneath?
Whatever it needs to be to be less than five feet.
So the concern?
On both fronts?
On both sides.
Out of the loft, I'm talking about six and seven bedrooms.
Yes. Bedroom three and the master suite will have vaulted ceiling.
So with regard to the vaulted ceilings beneath, there couldn't be anything above because the ceilings are going to go up on an angle. It's just for decoration that the dormers, obviously it's understood. It looks like you could then take that space out. But with the vaulted ceiling underneath, which certainly will be a condition of approval if the board chooses to vote that way, there can't be any expansion of that floor because there's nothing under it, other than the floor below.
And I just want to point out that the walls that form the edges of each bedroom and the loft are five foot high. The new wall's five foot, so this wall, and then this wall is five foot. And that, that was, that area, I believe, was. The area of the third floor is 638 square feet to the five-foot line. We're allowed 701 based on 50% of the floor below, so we're under the 50%.
Hey, Jim. Jim? Attic space needs accessibility, doesn't it?
If it's a walk-up attic, it's just.
No, 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 I'm talking about these two spaces up here, bedroom six and bedroom seven.
It's a vaulted ceiling, you said.
If they're vaulted ceilings, but you're still by cook, I think you'd need access to them.
You're calling those bedrooms?
No. They're calling them.
It's got to have a minimum of seven-foot headroom?
Right. I'm just saying, you just can't close off that space, you have to have access to it.
Right.
There's some kind of a door to get into that space.
It'll be a little hack, like an attic hatch.
That's all.
It'll be above the floor because...
So it'll be in the ceiling of the bedrooms below it?
It won't be in the ceiling, it'll be high on the wall because the, we're vaulting the ceiling below, so the ceiling of the, the vaulted ceiling will be probably three, four feet above the third floor, the habitable floor.
So if you want to get into that area, you have to go through the vaulted ceiling?
You have to, you would go above the vault. It won't be a full vaulted ceiling, there'd be attic space, it'll be, it'll go up at an angle and then flatten out, and then go back down at an angle. But that space between the ridge and the flat will be less than five feet high, so it's not considered a story.
So the ceiling below will be vaulted. There'll be a hatch in the wall of that ceiling because it's higher than the floor above it. And access will be through that hatch.
There will still be an attic space, but it won't be, it won't be more than five foot high. You'd have to crawl through it.
Totally not the intent of the rules.
But it is a literal reading of the rules.
Yes, it is a literal reading of the rules. The rules were meant so the house wasn't massive on the outside. So yes, you've skirted around the issue.
But that's not a variance.
That's not a variance.
Correct.
And the intent was to make it a little more interesting on...
And our intent was to make buildings not so massive.
I have a question on the front porch. The average porch is 10 feet, and you want to make it eight feet.
No, that's correct. The existing porch was at 8.1.
The existing porch is at eight foot?
Yep.
And that's being demoed and taken out?
Correct.
Why can't that be put back in at the average 10 foot? The average 10 foot.
I think that's something we're...
That would give you an eight-foot front porch instead of a 10-foot deep front porch on two floors.
Yeah, we'd have to talk to the client to see.
The, the houses on the corner, there's a house two doors down that's, that meets the requirement of 10.3, the front porch requirement, the setback. And that 14 north, two doors down, is the same thing. Both brand-new homes, and they both meet the setback of 10 feet. And you want us to give you two more feet on, on a deck? You would stick out farther towards the street than those other new homes.
That's correct.
It's correct, right? That's what you're asking for, two more feet. You could push the house back two feet?
Oh, swimming pool.
You have a swimming pool?
We have a swimming pool.
So you want, what I'm saying is, you want a swimming pool and you want a larger deck. Sometimes something has to give, you know? In my mind. I don't know how the other board members feel about the front porch setback, but I think it, with the other new homes on the same street that are meeting the requirements, I think you should too. That's just my opinion.
I agree.
I agree. And it still gives you a substantial eight-foot deck deep on both porch, the second and third floor. Or first and second floor, as it's called.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's important. I don't, I don't understand something. If, if, from the outside, from the wall to the edge of the porch is 10 feet, why do we have it as eight feet?
No, it's 10 feet now, but eight feet in the property. 10, 10 foot's required, so you're encroaching 10 feet.
That I didn't understand.
Yeah, all the other decks are averaging 10 feet from the property line. You want to average, you want to come to eight feet?
All the porches are would be aligned.
So the applicant hereby amends the application to be compliant with the deck to the front?
Setback?
Correct.
Prevailing setback, you'll adhere to that, you say?
Correct.
And how more than likely would we get rid of the variances for front yard?
If we move the deck, you'd get two feet by the left.
Well, two feet by 11, Mr. Palmasano's...
Two feet by the left.
He's talking about 22 feet of additional...
Should that get rid of the landscape? Yeah. Roger.
32 feet. Why?
64 feet, 64 square feet.
Do you know what that reduces it to? Do you know what that reduces it to?
Calculate.
So we're just going to calculate the number. By moving the porch back to prevailing, we gain approximately 64 square feet of additional landscape coverage. So we're trying to figure out if that makes the variance go away or just reduces it.
For total landscape?
Yeah.
You comply on?
It's still not here. Well, we have, we're at 53.7.
One at a time, please, board members. Are we calculating, or are we, okay. How you doing, Michael? How you doing? I said, how are you doing?
Roger, we're calculating. One of the pool variances, just I'm getting confused. It's six foot to the rear and to the sides, but only three foot to the house?
Yes.
That's the new, that's the...
Three foot around the entire pool, but to the property line, six foot.
So the pool is compliant. And the width between the pool and the house is also compliant. Mr. Lolio's calculating out to see if we've overcome the landscape variance. If we've got the setbacks, then we're limiting, and we've already reduced and gotten rid of the third-floor deck. We're down to just a few, but I don't want to go forward though he knows the exact number.
Okay.
It's like, it's like, it's like 440 required, and 440 is what we're coming up with.
For the front yard or the entire?
For the front yard.
So we're meeting everything?
I'm meeting exactly, according to my calculations right now.
So by Mr. Palmasano's suggestion, putting the front yard deck back at prevailing, that additional space we pick up puts the landscape coverage exactly at conforming.
Are you saying front yard or total?
Both.
Just the front yard landscape?
Just the front yard, that's what I thought. Total landscape?
Landscape, we're not going, we're still not going to...
So then, Mr. Chairman, is that coming out then? The front yard landscape variance?
If they meet it, it'll come out. They can meet it, yeah.
They can meet it, and so will the deck.
Thank you.
And so will the two front yards have, one and two?
Can we stop the conversations? Everything needs to be on the record. We're not in, we're not in...
One and two will come out also.
We're not on a break.
One and two, the front yard setbacks to the decks will come out.
Thank you. They would comply. Total? The front yard to the porch to the third-floor deck?
Right. What else do we need to discuss, then?
Overall landscape, we're determining if overall landscape, Collins had a question, is compliant, and Bob's just checking on that now.
Is that all? Eric?
If you got rid of that extra parking that you don't need, I would comply.
All right.
If we get rid of the front, if we get rid of the front porch, I'll be at 31.1%, which is still, I need 33.8.
You're, you're...
But I can eliminate some parking too to, to get there.
Six bedrooms, what are you still?
Five bedrooms, he needs three spots. He's got five spots.
He's got six.
Where's the six?
Oh, his room, the loft.
Where's that?
For six bedrooms, it's four spaces.
So those two bedrooms were seven and eight?
If we call it, if we call it six bedrooms, we still only need four spaces, I can eliminate a whole parking spot.
So are you saying you're eliminating one of the outdoor spaces to landscaping? And if so, which one?
Would be the one, the one, not on the street.
Street, the further back.
All right, so...
I see, Clem, I didn't see that.
Just by way of clarification, I know certain board members believe the bedroom count is greater than five. To the extent that's a concern, even with six bedrooms, we meet the parking requirements. If it's five bedrooms, we more than meet the parking, and one of those parking spaces could be additional landscape coverage. So I guess the question is, does the board believe that it's a five-bedroom house? If so, we eliminate a parking spot, that's landscape coverage, we don't need the landscape variance. If not, and we leave the parking spot, we're still short on landscape. We're saying it's a five-bedroom house.
I, I say to the board, we leave the parking space and be short on the, on the, on the greenery. Parking space is so much more important than a small patch of grass to make.
If that's the case...
Get the car off the street.
And I mean, listen, that's not a problem for us if that's the case, and we call it six bedrooms.
That's my recommendation to the board.
Then we're, you know, we're getting a six-bedroom house, even though we're not really going to have six bedrooms because that space is a true loft, but if that satisfies the board more to have more parking as opposed to more front yard landscaping, that's actually better for the applicant.
But you still maintain a larger curb cut?
Okay.
Landscape is back there as a little aesthetic effect of the neighborhood.
Can someone turn Clem's microphone on for me, please?
Under that scenario, Mr. Chairman, the application is amended to have six bedrooms, five parking spaces. That area above, we're not calling it a bedroom because we don't think it is, but we can still use that for the parking requirement. And now we're talking overall landscape coverage, we're still under, even with the reduction of the width of the deck going back from about 10 feet wide, approximately to eight feet wide. Building height isn't a variance, and we would again submit at the third floor, even though it doesn't meet the intent, it meets the stated language of the ordinance because the area below isn't something that can be accessible, and that wall can't really be broken through, but I guess that's an issue for the board to believe the applicant or not. The applicant's here to testify to that if need be.
Leo, clarification, can we just amend this plan to six bedrooms? I, I can't see that. We'd have to do all new plans drawn.
I don't think they...
You just, you just said you wanted to amend it?
No, no.
He wants to leave it as, but there's five shown, and you want to leave it at five.
We do, but everyone keeps thinking it's a six-bedroom house.
But you're not amending it to a six-bedroom house, you're keeping it at a five-bedroom house.
With an extra parking space.
We don't care about the parking space. It's a five-bedroom house.
Correct. But what Clem said was, keep the parking space because you need that more than...
I understand that, Clem. It's fine.
And there won't be any habitable...
And the board was saying, people on the board were saying they think it's a six-bedroom. That was the issue.
Right.
But he said he wanted to amend it to a six-bedroom application.
He didn't say he wanted to amend the plans, he wanted to amend the application to say it was six bedrooms, to acknowledge that the plans, same plans, were six bedrooms.
I understand that. What I'm saying is that we don't want him to amend it to a six-bedroom because then he could go find room and put a six-bedroom in.
Right.
Right now, we're giving him approval for five, even though he has an extra parking spot.
And that's fine. That's, it can be the resolution.
And I think the testimony wasn't, tell me if I'm wrong, that, that there will not, that there will not be more than 50%. The third floor will not have more than 50% above, at five feet in height.
It will not have habitable space above, more than 50% above five feet high.
So it doesn't want, it will not be a habitable third floor, it'll be a half-story.
Jim?
It'll be a half-story.
It should say five feet, you know, I'm high to five feet.
The level's greater than the third.
Is it greater than...
It's not a little, it's not a habitable...
So that whole area will have less than five feet of height?
Is the third floor...
On that third floor?
The second floor, up to the...
The whole area in those gable portions of that could be considered an attic floor.
It's got to meet all the parameters.
But the, the main space will be over five foot high, where I'm showing the bedroom and loft. This whole space starts at five foot and then vaults up to eight. This space will not be over five foot, the attic space that's currently shown. My original intention was to build the roof and then just overframe those gables, so you really wouldn't be able to access them anyway, but we decided that he liked, the client liked the vaulted.
Vaulted ceilings and everything are better?
So what will be the height from the floor, the new floor, which will be the vaulted ceiling below, at, to the ridge?
Currently, currently the ridge from the, if it was just an attic floor to the ridge, would be seven and a half feet. So I'll make it three feet difference, and then you'll have a four and a half foot attic. It's not that, there's not that, it looks bigger on the plan than the actual space that's in there. It's only a difference of seven and a half feet to the high point, and then it's, it's a pretty steep route, so it's going to hatch down.
This is truly the case where the applicant just wants the footprint and is willing to work with the board regarding what goes into it. It's not, let's hide the ball, let's call this a den, but it's not really a den. And I understand Clem's concern because, you know, that happens, or, you know, we're going to put pavers in that are pervious, and we're not going to have the ground coverage. Mr. and Mrs. Schreiber basically are saying, we want the footprint, we'll give you the extra parking space, we're short on landscaping in the back, and at that point, we're pretty much there. And Mr. Collins is correct, I did say we were amending to add the six-bedroom, but that was only because that would make the requirement a fifth space. We can call it five bedrooms, but we'll be required to have five spaces. I know parking there is tight. North Sumner Avenue and that block is not an easy place to find a spot, so you'll have five parking spots.
Where's the air conditioning and the pool equipment going?
I was proposing, I was going to put that on the decks, right next to the master bedroom, the second-floor deck. I forgot to show it on the corner.
The compressors?
Yes.
Right outside that master bed?
Yeah, I was going to create like a privacy screen right off that, that deck.
How about the pool heater?
We're going to have two HVAC units and pool equipment in that corner. And that's within, that's within the side yard setbacks.
The pool equipment, were you saying you're putting it under the house?
No, it's on the, if you look at the second floor, there's a little notch next to the master bathroom for the pool equipment.
On the second floor, you're going to...
I thought you said that's where the air conditioning compressor is.
Both. I was going to put both there.
It's the rarest of applications. The applicant wants the noise next to their bedroom. They're not putting it to bother the neighbors. They're saying, we want to be as friendly as possible, all this noise will be right outside our window.
I sleep there.
Look, it certainly shows their dedication to the house and to the neighborhood. Look, it certainly shows their dedication to the house and to the neighborhood.
There's not much room on the site. Obviously, we're only three and a half feet off on the other side, and then this side.
We need revised plans showing these variances. Landscaping and.
I don't think so.
Tray ceilings and the two attics.
These are all big conditions of approval, they don't come in to Jimmy Nye in that form, they're rejected.
So we'll submit, after assuming the board has seen sufficient vote, Mr. McLaren will receive in due course eight sets of revised plans for zoning approval, and then that goes to Mr. Gallantino for construction.
Can I throw a little curveball in on there? There's a beautiful tree out in front of this house. And we're losing our beautiful trees. Is there any way that you can skirt that driveway and save that tree? I know the back, you're losing the back tree, there's no way that's safe. That's, that's a shame. But the. Well, I think that's in the driveway.
I don't have a, I don't have an exact location.
I would like to, but I don't know.
Could you speak into the microphone? Because it's not conversation.
I would like to keep the tree, but I don't know how realistic it is, I don't know where it is compared to the cutout of where the driveway is going.
It's in the driveway.
I think it might be in the driveway. And if not, you definitely cut roots. I mean, I would assume. I mean, which then, I think, would cause maybe an issue down the road with the, you know, dying and falling, and, so that would be my only issue. But we're going to play new ones.
We have to play a new one.
Okay.
Supposedly we got a parking variance, we could keep the tree, but now we're changing the plan entirely. So with those modifications, unless the board has any further questions from Mr. Lolio or the applicant, we would rest as amended. And it would still be a five-bedroom house, but as a condition of approval, five parking spaces. So I misspoke earlier when I said six-bedroom, but either way, five parking spaces is enough.
Not on Fourth of July weekend.
If there's nothing else, would you have something to add?
No, I just, the front yard landscaping, you said you can make that comply exactly. Is that with the existing forty-seven point five, or you can get it to the fifty percent that's required? It, I'm just.
It would, the front yard landscaping, I'd get the fifty-three point seven, the disparity option.
Okay, so you're, so that variance is going to go away?
It comes to four hundred forty square feet, and that, that, I would, you know, I might be off a couple square.
But for total, you're only at about thirty-one point one percent, so you still need that variance, correct?
And that's necessitated, Mr. Maddos, because we're keeping the extra parking space, even though it's not necessary, had we gotten rid of that fifth spot, then we would be complying with.
The board would rather have the space, I got it.
Correct.
And Roger, we're getting rid of the habitable third floor one, two then, right?
They're getting rid of the, I don't want to use the definition habitable.
Third floor deck.
The third floor deck?
No.
That's, that's going away.
They're getting rid of the space over five feet will be within fifty percent.
So we're eliminating that last.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think the accurate way to say it is they'll comply with the definition of a half-story.
Correct. And no third floor deck.
The board done? Is there anyone here from, are you done, Eric?
I am, yes.
Is there anyone here from the audience that would like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any further comments from the board? Can you read the motion?
Sure. Someone needs to make a motion for C. variance relief for the following. As we mentioned, the first two variances in Roger's report, they're going to go away, which are the front yard setbacks to the porch and the second floor deck. So the variances are a minimum, a side yard setback on the right side, where three point six feet is proposed and eight feet is required. Combined side yard setback to the building, where fifteen point five feet is proposed, and nineteen point six one feet is required. Minimum combined side yard setback to the building and, and the decks, first and second floor, nine point nine feet is proposed, and nineteen point six one feet is required. Building coverage is proposed at thirty-four point four percent. It's, that's a reduction, but it's still a variance, because thirty-three point eight percent is the permitted maximum. Total landscape coverage, they've improved that by, by removing, by complying with the front yard setback, so it looks like they're at approximately thirty-one point one percent, but it's still variance, because thirty-five percent is required. The front yard landscaping, uh, coverage variance goes away. The curb cuts they're proposing, twenty-three and a half foot curb cut, where twenty feet is the permitted maximum. The third floor deck and the third floor habitable floor variances go away, and the conditions will be the following. That attic area will only have four and a half feet or less than five feet of distance between the floor and the ceiling, and the applicant will comply with the definition of a half-story. The house will only, the dwelling will only have five bedrooms, and the applicant will, as we said, comply with the front yard setbacks by removing a couple feet off of the deck and front, deck and porch in the front. And then all other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report and all representations made during the course of the hearing by on behalf of the applicant.
I'll make that.
Go ahead, you go first.
I'll make that motion.
I second.
Tom Collins?
In this case here, we're going from eleven requested variances down to six. I would think at this point that the detriment to the neighborhood is barely outweighed by the betterment with the parking and the aesthetics and the improvements to the property. So I'll vote in favor. Say yes.
I can't hear.
You ready for me?
Clem Wasleski.
There's something about this application that makes me uncomfortable, I can't put my finger on it, and I can't think of a specific reason to reject it, but I'm not at all comfortable approving it. This gray areas make me very uncomfortable. I'm going to abstain.
Rich Patterson?
I'm also uncomfortable with it, and I have reasons for it. I think the, I think you're asking for a way too massive of a house, I think the house on your right is going to be smothered. I think you've got a twenty-three foot curb cut. Some board members may think parking is better, I don't think people use their parking spaces, but that's not for us to decide. But mortgage ninety-one or ninety-five percent paved, and I don't think we give up green space for parking spaces. The entire backyard will be no green space. Some of these are, I can't object to them because they're not a variance, but the variances that I do object to is the side yard setback and the twenty-three foot curb cut. I vote no.
Mike Crystaldi?
I'm going to be with Clem. I'm very uncomfortable. I don't know why either, I totally agree with you on that, though. I'm going to do the same, abstain.
Jim Gallantino?
It's a house raise, and we're getting a house up to the current flood elevation. And I'm going to watch the third floor deck, uh, third floor area, if it's greater than seven feet, then it becomes a habitable third floor, which is five A construction, but it has to be greater than one-third. That's five A construction. I'll show you the section tomorrow. Yeah, I'm looking at you.
You're looking at me?
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, I'm voting yes.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I think that the applicant has made adjustments and are trying to work with us and the city to make this comply as much as they can. I feel that the parking is important on the first block north. I, it's flood compliant, that house is kind of, I grew up there. When I was five years old, I had friends who lived there, and it needs to be improved, and it needs to be raised, and I vote in favor of the application.
Craig Palmisano?
Like Jimmy Gallantino says, this is a house raise, and it is something that's going to make it flood compliant. You did, you did make our decks smaller for my, for me and the board, and, and we have adequate parking off-street for it. I'm going to approve this project.
Application passes, four yeses, one no, and two abstentions.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, here. One second. Okay. Hey. There's a lot of things, board members have approached me about, there's things we need to refine in the master plan. It seems every meeting, we don't have time, or this meeting, the stress of the meeting, we, we can't do it afterwards. In lieu of calling a specials or a, a additional meeting, I'm going to appoint a subcommittee to be named later, and we're going to discuss and bring to the board changes that we want in, refinements we want in the master plan. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? All right.